2025, 6:01 PM. Must be recording. I believe at some point we'll have members joining us remotely, so we'll be voting by roll call. It's time. We're taking chance in 15 minutes. It's time to vote.
Same with board reorganization, if you're on the way up margin.
I'm here to present the A and R for six three mil for three.
Sir, my name is Justin Pan, our Lancity of Veron Towne. So we're asking endorsement for this A and R plan for Paul Larson. In 2023, the board requested A and R, we need to acquire an acre to the rear. House. Partial A, not building. So A and R tonight basically is a step to formally combine two pieces into one. So without creating anything new. Particularly it's not a building, but adding a physical house parcel.
Is that the partial of table, the whole section? You're drawing line from the deck, that's piece of that in the back.
Yes, that's its existing house, 116, and that dotted line is the consistent line. Partial A in the rear is what the board was, you know, on the 23.
It's a straight line here. That's the something, but yeah, right here.
Any questions from the audience?
Just that here, so I'm not going to, like, I don't know what's going on.
The A and R files with the state owner. It is already combined during the zone for this form, as I said.
Right.
That was much if it was if he already owned both parcels.
Okay, Mr. Larson, that's a really good advice, and as we take this step.
Questions from the audience? Want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the A and R for sixty-three mil for three.
Sorry?
Second.
Oh, those in favor, roll call. You or I?
Eric Podge, I'll abstain, I just got here.
Jay Cross, I.
I roll, right?
It's in the back, if you guys didn't do it yet.
Even if I slam all the information through the lines.
Yeah, we're gonna make you a stand. Other in the red. We gotta figure out how they. Oh, I'm not. She has.
Does it require finding it as well?
We don't have to wait. We have to be the board organization. So this is a goal remember.
I can take you with me?
You just need one A and R sign, or do you need?
No, just one. We'll record it.
Make sure you stand while we roll the motion.
Just the top one.
Roll stand.
This one, just the top one.
Yeah, I understand. All right.
There anyone?
We only have to sign as well. Dylan, what would we do with that?
I mean, go. Our highest. The most.
Thank you all very much.
I'm a class member, Ben.
My home, the light, that's good for me. Got to get moving. Thank you all.
So on the public hearing notes, do I just read the notes? And then for all of them to open all at once? So in the form of NPL, amended by any were both seven public hearing to guide Warren Annicles, the upcoming special town meeting. Warren Annicles, Aris Paulus. Are we guiding annotations and numbering styles? I'm sorry, Aris Paulus, are we guiding the amended zoning by law changes to section five, number three, flood hazard of the late district? To reforming annotation numbering styles, welcome amended zoning by laws, three. Changes to section two oh six, signed by law, six oh three marijuana establishment, marijuana treatment centers. Number four, changes to article three, including the table uses. Five, changes to section three or four, open space communities, and four point oh two, site plan review. Six, addition, a new common driveway zoning by law, and a new retreat lots zoning by law. Seven, changes to articles seven, separate dwelling unit. These meetings will take place at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. At six PM, it's Mendon Town Hall, twenty Main Street, Mendon, Mass, oh one seven five six. Any person wishing to be heard on any of the above topics should appear at the designated time and place. Probably least proposed zoning by law changes available in the town clerk's office by contacting planning at mendonmass.gov. So. Probably stop, we'll first walk through it.
Yeah, so the order of those is a little different than the order that you have on your motion sheet. Just because of what the warrant, the warrant looks like. And that, I think the select board is already. Is near approval, or I don't know if they've approved the order of things, but I have it based on what article it will be on the warrant. So the first one will be article seven, which is flood hazard overlay. And I have a little blurb, I can say about each one as we go.
Dylan, if I could just disclose the record that I consider on committee for brief time, in addition to the land, it's just so I was somewhat involved in some of these changes, so I just want to make a file of record.
Sounds good, you can still vote on on the recommendation as far as I'm aware. You don't have to if you don't want to.
So first one we're looking at is section five oh three, flood hazard of the late district.
So this one, flood hazard overlay district was revised at a previous town meeting based on what FEMA and the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation required of the towns that are part of the National Flood Insurance Program. Unfortunately, we forgot to put in the definition section, it was as like an attached sheet, and it didn't get put into the actual paperwork that went to the assessor, that's right, Attorney General. So this time we're just bringing in the definition section, nothing else is changing besides that. These definitions are directly as requested or required from FEMA. And this just allows us to remain in the National Flood Insurance Program, so people can get flood insurance. They get a wide range of options directly through FEMA. Different options that they can utilize.
Do we have areas that are within a floodplain and that are impacted by them?
We have a few, you don't actually need to be in a floodplain to benefit from NFIP. You can get flood insurance even if you're not in a flood zone, and that's sort of what joining NFIP is about, is it kind of gets more people options to obtain flood insurance if they want, instead of just need.
What I guess, what's what's driving it, is it because that people are having harder time getting insurance if they live in one of those areas, or?
That has been an issue, and that's sort of where I think where the program started. And these changes, every once in a while, they update things. We have like new maps that had to be updated last time. And let's see what else they made me update. They had new information about like storage of recreational vehicles, so they updated theirs, which means we have to update ours. And then the definitions were just exactly as they asked, and it just applies to that one by law.
How many questions in the audience are on?
Big damage here, so we will just, when we load on you, we'll just vote regularly. And then if if and when damage comes, we'll go back to a roll call. So you guys got any, any comments or any change you want to discuss?
Is this a new bylaw being introduced?
No, it's a red line, red line changes, okay, so we get the first page, we get the whole back page.
It's just that we forgot to approve the definition of the last time meeting.
Anybody in the audience, have any questions on this?
No, but but this chairman, are you going to handle each one of them separately with the roll call vote?
That's what we're doing.
Okay, I, it's trouble hearing.
We're not going to roll call because we don't have anybody on remotely, we thought we were going to have a member remotely. But as a standard, we don't have a remote member.
Okay.
So we're just going to do a regular roll. Okay. So if that's the case, everybody's good with this, I want to obtain a motion to accept the change.
So I move to recommend article seven, town meeting to amend amended zoning bylaws, section five oh three, flood hazard overlay district as proposed.
You have a second?
Second.
Follows in favor?
I agree.
Cross, I.
You or I?
I'd roll, right. Guess we're still going to do a roll call.
It's not.
Any way you want to do it.
But certainly makes it clear, doesn't it?
It does.
All right, next up.
Yeah, the transcription.
Yeah, to help with that first.
All right, so next up, my colleague, the use regulations, section three oh one, available land uses.
Yeah, so this is sections three oh one, the table pages, sections three point oh two and three point oh three. I'm clarifying that just because three point oh four is in a separate warrant article. But this encompasses the rest of article three, these regulations. So this one, unlike the last one, the last one is mostly just my department, me. This one was reviewed by the zoning bylaw review committee. The table uses is being updated to accommodate new bylaws, such as the ADU bylaw, which does exist already, we're just making sure that it's clearly put into the use regulations. And additional changes include clarification and organization, modernizing some use descriptions, and better reflecting modern practices. Are there any specific questions about about what's being changed here, you know, soon?
I guess, just based on the definition of modern defining.
Yeah.
This is, what did that entail?
Let's see what did that, one of them was. Instead of retail stores that include fabrication and assembly, we didn't think. The zoning bylaw review committee didn't think that. Like, there are many retail stores that are doing fabricating and assembly, and also that should be in industrial use instead. So we're reusing that to save retail stores, which you can hope to set us. Another is restaurant or other establishment providing food beverages within the building, especially post COVID. There's a lot more outdoor seating, which still comes through a site plan review. So instead of saying within the buildings, it's on the premises. Things like. There we have. Cafeterias, snack bars, gift shops, and vending machines that are firms, we use only with no outside display of signage. That's being taken out because this absolutely known. It doesn't affect the public, it's it's a vending machine for staff in a in a place to use. Just a little. Things like that.
And questions about this one?
Anyone have any questions or comments on this, on the women's?
This is a discussion, is there anything that was, I don't know, widely debated, contested, controversial, or anything that had a factor?
This one, there was nothing that was very controversial. I think everyone. So anybody really pity about the changes that were made?
I think it's cleaning up the use regulations and making it a little clearer, making it easier for people to buy for proper purpose.
We have something that said large animal hospital, then I had to like. You had to go at a different age just to read minimum five acres, so now it's on the same one, things like that.
Any questions from the audience? You want online? See the hands raised. I have a motion.
I move to recommend article eight to town meeting to amend amended zoning bylaws, section three oh one, three oh two, and three oh three as proposed.
You have a second?
Second.
Follows in favor?
I agree.
Go side.
You or I?
I'd roll, right.
And just to note, article nine is a duplicate attack on those warrants, so we're going to skip over article nine. That's okay, it's okay to pass.
So, next up, section three oh four, open space communities by law.
And full point on two side of the review. So these two are also reviewed by the zoning bylaw review committee. They're being proposed together and worked at the same time with the board, as the changes proposed to each other are similar intent. The changes proposed to the open space communities by law will add clarification to the process of preliminary approval and definitive approval. And the site plan review by law lacks similar clarity. And the changes ensure that standards are applied equally across the board, and they sort of clear out for minor and major site interviews. So it's expanding on the exact. Way that these would be approved, what the planning board needs in the application package. Nor approval for planning board will absolutely make if it's a large project or a small project, or a preliminary project or definitive project. I'll also mention the copy that is shared online right now. There was, there are a few very small changes I'm going to go over here, based on discussions with town council. Common driveway and flag lot are currently. You know, current open space communities by law has definitions within that for common driveway and flag lot, but we're reviewing those because we have a separate warrant approval for those. And it's better to have these definitions, what?
Is flag lot the same thing as retreat lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't know if there's any more questions.
And then we need the site under. There was one addition to site under review, G. B. Three of the five five five, and then one. The bottom of it says that uses identified as by right may not be denied by a planning board. As the addition is, may not be denied by a planning board through the site under review process, nor may they be subject to dangerous conditions which could constitute a fairer due control. Clarify that language a little more, and then the fiscal impact assessment is being removed because town council does not believe that that is legal to ask them for fiscal impact.
Impacts taxpayers.
You can still do. Like a community, you can do a community impact assessment, which might include some of the fiscal impacts, but you can't. Require them to do a fiscal impact assessment, they can do one, even after, but it can't be part of the application.
That's jumping guns, actually, that came a move from site plan review as well, because I think that was a special. Oh, we're looking at. Oh, okay, that's why I couldn't find the section.
So I can go over a lot, which is good, close it up.
I had a couple of questions.
Makes it easier on people. Any questions from the members of the board?
I have a couple of questions on the site plan reviews. So we're adding the whole procedure around mine site plan review this time. I guess my one question on minor site plan review was, it looks like it allows for no public hearing. But I kind of just had an open question, should we still be notifying like abouters, right now it doesn't look like it allows for it.
Were you, were you working on?
Yeah, we're.
Let's see, let's see if I can place this. This is under G, minor site plan review. Item III.
What page are we on?
Sixty-six, so there we go, that would have been helpful.
G.
And so.
Yeah, sixty-six, yeah.
Do you want to interfere? You're.
Page sixty-six?
Yeah.
Yes. So I think the reason for this is because minor site under view is for uses that are permitted as of right.
Yeah.
And so. Honestly, most towns don't even do a site plan review for by right uses. I think that's why they're not doing a hearing notice here. And that costs the applicants a significant amount of money. In the past, we've had like sole proprietors, you know, just one person trying to start a small business, it would cost them probably three hundred, four hundred dollars to do that, I assume. Because it's by right, it would, they would still have, it would still be in the planning board agenda, but yeah, I think. I think it's good practice for anyone who lives near a commercial district to make sure that they have their emails on their planning board. Sure, there's some things that legally we just don't like, report as much, and I think, yeah.
Okay, I'm I'm good with that one, if anybody has any other question, but if I have another question. Page seventy-three. Item like digit nine. So proposed development shall be related harmoniously to the natural landscape and terrain, the surrounding townscape, and to the use scale and sitting of existing structures in the vicinity. Super vague. I've, I think, before I sat on the board, I have tried to use this to my advantage. And it was just very open for interpretation. I'd like to raise it up as like, hey, I think we could give some performance criteria to this to make it more specific. Things that I thought of were, you know, for similar scale and mass, you know, we could compare to existing buildings in the area, say more than ten percent larger, or something along those lines. We should clarify what surrounds means, what, you know. What does that mean in any context? And I think we should also give consideration for what zones are in the vicinity. So I'd like to see those three things incorporated into this.
Actually, this whole section, I think, especially that paragraph we're talking about is preexisting.
Yes.
I know it's in red, I just want to point that out, that it just got moved around, and that's why it's in red.
Yep.
But I understand, I think we can do that here. I would probably pull this out of the warrant if that's the case. Or we can do it through revising our design guidelines and utilizing that more. Site under view can't be denied, but this is sort of a way for us to sort of. Ask, not require a harmonious look in the neighborhood. But I'm. Whatever you feel comfortable with, or do you want me to pull this out and do a little more work on it, or if you want to move forward the way it is and try to find other places to. Extrapolate on this and and expand it. I can also bring the town meeting in spring, put some changes up to.
What do others think, I mean, this is just my opinion?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't argue with, I think it makes sense to do that in terms of the best way to logistically push that, I mean, I defer to them, but I guess, is there a rush to this?
My only pressure for site plan review specifically is that we've had a lot of trouble with making sure that this is applied equally across the board. We've had trouble with especially minor site plan reviews, who has to come in, who doesn't? It's very unclear, I think some people asked permission and they get in trouble for asking permission, they have to come in, other people don't ask permission, we don't know they do. We get stuck, I think it's important that we solve that issue with clarification, so we know everyone is being treated equally across the board. All the people who need to come to planning board are coming to planning board as much as we can sort of police that. That's the important thing for me here, I think we've had some trouble with that in the past, and some people have gotten away with things, or, you know, or some of them have to come in for a lot of meetings when other people didn't.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
That's very here, but, and I'm comfortable going back, doing this in the fall, proving this, and then still looking at it again in the spring if we want to expand.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, it's, as you know, it's existing text, right, it's been there for a while. I'd just like to see it firmed up so that it's more specific, but given that it's been on the books for a while.
Also, I think all these bylaws can always make recommendations to change.
Yeah.
I don't know any time.
Yep.
If there was a process that we did not have a public hearing. Go for a little town meeting again.
Okay.
No, I I would tend to agree, there's a big points, I think there's a lot of substance here, it's important, based on the application. End of fusion, so I was for revisions and visiting necessary, not waiting, you know, we get majority of these revisions on the books. And can take a. A fine look, I guess, as to what's one of those ready to respond to.
So I'd be good with, you know, moving this to town meeting as it is now. Would you be able to give us some guidance as to what like, you know, better, more specific language would look like there, like?
In the future, even for the first spring? Yeah. I'm a full-time planner now, so that's my job. Just send me an email after this if you can, just because I have. Thousand bylaws I'm going through, so remind me, and I will absolutely put some language together after the spring.
Any other questions or points to move with? I'll open up to them once you go. Very good. Audience, any questions? Online, any questions? To you, yes.
Kathy.
Okay, Kathy?
Kathy's beard.
Hi, sorry, I I just want to say that I support that recommendation a hundred percent, that this is where we get hung up over and over and over again, and clarification in the bylaw or the design guidelines is critical to make sure everything is done well and across the boards for everyone, so just a comment, thank you.
Thanks, Dylan.
Kathy, sorry, were you saying you're aligned to the recommendation from the board member, or with the way that the bylaw is written?
No, my recommendation is suggesting editing it in addition, so that there is real clarity in what is accepted and not accepted, because you're right, there's a lot of confusion when you get to the finish line as to what was approved, what wasn't approved, there's all kinds of interpretations used. So I think in order to be balanced and fair with everyone, it's it's important to be very clear in the language, whether it's design guidelines or the bylaw itself.
Yeah, just all settled on the table, one one more question, it's right there.
Jane Lowell, forty Millville Street, I agree with the previous speaker. I think there has to be more specificity to some of these bylaws. And I'm here because of the driveway and. And I'm here because of the driveway and the lots that aren't, don't have the frontage, because we're dealing with that now, so that comes later. But at any rate, I agree with the previous speaker.
Okay.
Yeah, my only question was just about the, the notice to the abutters, I think I missed that, so what was the?
Oh, but my question had just been, this iteration, we're introducing the minor, minor site plan review.
We do have it, yeah.
Okay.
It's very poorly written, sorry to say.
We're adding structure.
Yes. Minor.
Minor site plan review. And I was just kind of wondering, even in a minor, it's gonna should be.
Haven't, haven't in the past for that, definitely as well, so a lot of the changes come forth right now. We can also change other parts of it too. So this is clarifying the minor site plan review process, but we can also clarify something on notification in the future.
Gotcha.
Something to that.
Yep. Good, yep, good. Thank you.
All right, I'll move to recommend Article 10 to Town Meetings to amend, amend zoning bylaws 304 Open Space and 402 Site Plan Review as proposed with the intent that we will come back and revisit them in the spring.
Over the second. Will fail.
Hodge, I.
Kraus, I.
You're all right.
I am all right. Sign by law, section two, two, four, oh, six.
And also six point oh three marijuana establishments and medical marijuana treatment centers. And these bylaws, the words, the zoning by law review committee again, the sign by law and marijuana establishment bylaws are in the same warrant article as many changes. I'm gonna read this, they're in the same warrant article again, like we had a few before. The two thing made to both sections are to ensure that our bylaws do not violate free speech. The main thing, I'll go through both, but the main thing in the marijuana one is removing a, a spot where we violate free speech directly. So we need to put that for the constitution.
What else with that?
Yeah, yeah, I've got to fix that. So the sign by law, there's a few things here. A clear view triangle is, is being proposed, so that's on corners.
Can you explain that? I couldn't picture it.
It's a lot, I know. It's a, that's the way it's often written in a lot of towns bylaws. If you have a corner lot, putting a sign on the corner that obstructs the view of the intersection is not allowed.
Sure.
Yeah. That way you have, you have sightlines. A lot of these are just clarification of how it's written. Owner of the property, it just says owner right now. Freestanding sign shouldn't be in the clear view triangle unless they're like above, below two feet tall and above eight feet tall, so you still have that clear, like, that view of cars coming the other way. Temporary sign regulations, you can see them in red, but they are mostly staying the same, it's being moved around. And then there's a big chunk here of types of signs, those are all being removed because it's sort of dangerous for us to try to regulate different types of signage.
So what, what kind of signs?
Home improvement construction signs, political signs, real estate signs, we have all these different categories. We can run into trouble if we try to regulate one type of speech and not another. That's our trouble with marijuana one is that it was regulating what marijuana establishments can say, whereas we're not regulating, say, what church can say. We can't sort of separate any type of business or, or free speech that ought to be treated equally. That's all. And then for marijuana establishments, I capitalized a few things, that was me. You know, wrote out marijuana establishment instead of ME, which is never actually defined. But the main one is no use covered herein shall be allowed to have freestanding accessory signs in the town amendment. I think we've been sued over that specific line. I don't know if it went to court exactly, but it almost did at least.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have Lauren on, there's not a question on there.
Yeah, sorry, I'm gonna go.
All right, the illuminated signs section.
Yeah.
Re, I guess it's now G. That's all existing.
Yes.
I guess that, I, I had another clar- clarification opportunity for us here because, you know, it, it's kind of using arbitrary language around what the intensity of the light should be. Okay, I, I was just.
Yeah.
Going to suggest that we should have performance criteria.
Yeah. A few before it, it should be E now, sign illumination shall have a Kelvin rating of three thousand or lower, limited at sunset. Then on H, eliminated signs shall bear the approval from the National Board of Fire Underwriters or adding AME International Dark Sky Association. Those are two places where we're trying to specify. We love the language that was a little more vague, but did some specificity in the ones around it.
So Kelvin is a measure of like color.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a brightness.
Yeah.
But we have soft white light, semi opaque surfaces.
Right.
There was a lot of talk over the scientific, sort of like what makes sense, if no one was comfortable with knowing that number.
Yeah.
So I think CMRPC, Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Mission recommended these numbers from other towns that they've worked with, but they didn't have a specific recommendation for like how bright the sign is, just things like soft white light, semi opaque surfaces, International Dark Sky Association, but I would hope they have some.
Yeah.
Clarification on that. I think that's sort of our catchall, is the dark sky.
Yeah, and given that I'm not a light scientist, I can't help remembering those, so. Okay. With respect to the marijuana, man, now. Marijuana sign by law. Respect what you're saying around, you know, not regulating the speech on it. Do we have any say into, for lack of a better term, the modality of the, the sign? In other words, what I mean was I got a particular bee in my bonnet when the wacky waving on one showed up.
Yeah.
Not too far from my house.
I haven't actually, I don't know if we actually dress wacky waving art men.
Yeah.
But if that's a sticking point, we can definitely address it in the future if you'd like.
Okay.
Um, I know we have things about like banner, assigned in lightweight fabric or similar material, fixed one or more edges or corners, any surface. That kind of is a wacky waving art man, but I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
That's a good one, I, we didn't think of this guy.
Yeah.
Open up, I want to buy marijuana stuff. Or something.
Just want to comment on the sign and the illumination or the lighting. A lot of times what we may see is abutters that might be playing about light pollution, the lights spilling over into their property. So maybe the limitations on the brightness and the soft white bulbs and so forth might look at that. Is there anything in particular in here that speaks to that light spilling over into a abutters or?
That's a good point, I don't think it's.
I think I did read that. It was, I thought it was in the section that I referred to.
Actually, it might be two or three, three D internally illuminated signs. And then sign illumination Kelvin ratings.
We have, actually right before that, I think this is.
Yeah.
Some would help, shielded, white light direct downward horizontally, but not upward, but I don't have.
Dylan, the section that I was referring to before, says shall not adversely affect neighboring premises, reflect or shine on lots used for residential purposes nor impair the safe vision of operators of vehicles moving on public roadways.
Okay, that answers that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm normally not like this, Dylan, but there is a misspelling on section D Business District, District, prominent signs. Height is spelled wrong, but again, normally not a stickler for those things.
That's the whole point of me doing this, I am, got to stick around, so.
Uh, just in section one A, on freestanding signs not to exceed twenty feet in height.
When you make your vote, please just point out that we're going to fix that.
I don't want me. I, I was reluctant to bring it up, but.
And anything that I do miss this, this year is coming to the spring. So I do know one typo that hasn't been fixed, I'm not bringing it because we have enough. There's one in the parking bylaw that's very annoying to me, that will come.
Got a question, Sean. Open up for the audience. Again, if I may, the conversation on Kelvin is correct, that, you know, color of the light. But if you're talking about the intensity of light, that's lumens.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that word.
Yeah, yeah.
Did I hear it?
No, you didn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
So, so did you go to establish a lumen li- limit?
There is no lumen limit right now, but the closest we've come to with CMRPC's recommendations was that it, the lighting has to be approved by the International Dark Sky Association. I don't know if they have a specific lumen rating, but I'm happy to bring it. I don't, I'm happy to bring a lumen rating to the springtime meeting as well.
Yeah, because otherwise, we have to deal with, you know, the international dark side, so.
I probably have to contact them or, you know, read through their rules, I, I.
We have to get familiar with the International Dark Sky Associations, and this, this is all on me.
Yeah, yeah, these are recommendations from CMRPC based on other towns that they've worked with. And, but this isn't, you know.
You would have thought that they would have already investigated that.
All right. Let me just read something real quick. Uh, Dark Sky International has specific lumen limits depending on the luminaires' total output for lights with a thousand lumens or less. Total uplight is capped at five lumens for lights emitting more than a thousand lumens. No more than half percent of the total output is allowed upwards with a strict maximum of fifty lumens in uplight.
Yeah, that's not great.
Lumen, yeah, there's, yeah. There's shielding guidelines, color temperature, intensity, recommendations.
Intensity.
But again, just a quick search.
I think what's interesting is that like dark sky implies, you know, that, well, it's the light pollution up, right? But it, you know, where signs are usually broadcast out, you know.
That's for all of these. So and the zoning by law review committee, I think a lot of these changes are necessary to clarify the bylaws or amend them in a way that which helps. But it leaves plenty of things to be added as well. Do you notice that section, there's not a lot of red text in that section? But we still, we can still add more, if you can, we can change my red text too, you know, fine.
So.
Call me exactly.
There, there is one something that's in there that could be helpful, and it just, it, it's about shielding. It says lights should be fully shielded to prevent upward light pollution.
Yeah, we have exterior illumination shall be by a stationary shielded white light directed downward horizontally but not upward and solely at the sign. That's their existing language. But given this talk, I'm, I'm happy to investigate further and, and get more. It's taking two, five of this, the way that helps us, we thought. But this gives us, you know, what, six months or so of, of updated bylaws, and we can keep going.
Yeah, that's, I think in, like, goal of tonight is take step one of improvements, and then we're identifying a couple of areas tonight where we can take step two in the spring, so.
This doesn't preclude us from taking action on humans in the future.
Yeah.
Hello? Anybody online? Hodge? Tom, Tom?
With the, what is the, the typo fixed for height?
Right, okay. I move to recommend Article 11 Town Meeting to amend, amend zoning bylaws 206 Fine By Law and 603 Marijuana Establishments and Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers. Mostly as proposed, except for the amendment of, what is this?
Changing.
Two oh six D. I one A, there's a typo on the word height.
Second.
Second.
What was the fail?
Hodge, I.
Kraus, I.
You're all right. I am all right. Okay. So next up. Let's read Town Meetings, seven point oh one.
Okay, so this one is not zoning by their review committee, this one is Town Council and myself helping out based on what's already been adopted. So the EU bylaw was adopted at last year's special town meeting. Many towns also recently adopted these EU regulations based on new state law. Unfortunately, the Attorney General rejected portions of our proposed bylaw from that year, last year. Many other towns are also facing the same sort of partial rejection. We need to revise a portion here. The changes proposed are based directly off of the AG's response to what was approved at town meeting, what was voted on at the last special town meeting in the fall of last year. So everything you see is based off a long letter we got from the Attorney General's office.
Increase the size of square footage, you know?
No, same square footage.
Okay.
Mostly adding some definitions like.
So you will.
Yeah. We, our procedural requirements are very unclear. It just said like, refer back to the special permit regulations or something, so we had to actually write it out for this. It's basically the same special permit regulations, but just tailored to an AG's specific. And then I changed a few places where by law was one word, the title of ours has hyphens. That, that's me, not the AG, but just to clarify. We had to clarify like transit station, we don't have any transit stations that even like if we did, nothing that would affect this. Like we don't have a ferry terminal, I don't think we have a bus station, we don't have a subway or commuter rail. Or, yeah, because there's a rule about, you don't have to require off-street parking if you're in a half mile radius of a transit station. We have to put that language in according to the AG, she thinks it would be clearer if we put it in there, so it's there, and we're going to fix this.
I'm annoyed if you do.
Yeah, when the subway comes to town.
What's the point, must pass that line?
Teamship down on your.
Any comments, questions from the board?
No.
Mark, you're writing.
I'm making notes about what I need to follow up to Dylan on for, uh, spring.
As you go, I'll open up to the audience.
Good.
Questions, comments? Online, any questions or comments?
This, where's the question?
Square footage maximum?
See.
Half of existing dwelling?
Yeah, uh, found each row's floor area of principal dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller, and then special permit is.
Well, that's all around the square feet by special permit.
Yeah, twelve hundred square feet.
What default, uh, by special permit?
Yeah.
Nine hundred. The challenge I have is nine. Or half the size of the square footage of existing houses.
Whichever is smaller, yeah.
A lot of people going for special permits. Maybe not amendment, but out in Worcester, along the way.
Yeah, yeah. Say that again.
I said a lot of people out in Worcester in the city are going by for special permit, they're going for the twelve hundred square feet.
They go up to the twelve hundred?
They want the room. They spend their kind of money, then they're going to put up something that's. They spend their kind of money, then they're going to put up something that's breaking. You watch. Nine hundred square feet. Nineteen fifty range. So I got down the K. Oh, there you go. Sixty square feet. There you go. Right, entertain a motion.
I move to recommend article twelve, town meeting to amend the accessory dwelling unit by law as proposed.
Second.
How was the favor?
Ojai.
Cross eye.
You're right. I will, right? Right, moving on. Yeah. Six oh four. So the six oh four common driveways and six oh five retreat lots as proposed.
And these are new bylaws that are being proposed by the zoning by law committee. These two bylaws will allow us to regulate the creation of common driveways and retreat lots through the planning board instead of having them approved by the ZBA without consistent regulations. The common driveway will be limited to a total of four lots served and regulates the length, road construction, deed restrictions, et cetera. The retreat lots will be limited to having two times the minimum lot size. Creates a mandated distance between multiple retreat lots and additional regulations on dimensions, buffers, et cetera. Um, and I'll just note that, uh, since the, um, document was provided online, there's been one change to both, which, um, allows for open space communities to, um, waive requirements as long as the highway department, fire department, police department ensure emergency vehicle access, which has already been the case with open space communities. Um, they have a little more leeway because of the open space of their return to the. They have to build a subdivision to get that way.
And what does the, what does our current, what do our current bylaws say about common driveways?
The only place common driveways are mentioned are in the, uh, open space communities. And it's like one sentence saying like, if they utilize this, they need to do it in a safe way, something like that. It's, it's only mentioned there.
Okay, so.
We don't have any regulation on.
So does, no regulation. Does that mean that they're not allowed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, people go for variances for them.
So I guess that was my next question is if they're not allowed, but they're happening and that's.
They're going to the variance. Yeah, they're going to the ZBA.
Was there a, was there a conversation with council about that?
Um, yes, I talked to council about, um, these bylaws here. And she thinks this is a good way to, to regulate it, um, have clear guidance. My baby, sorry. If we have clear guidance, then, um, it's harder to go through the variance process. They can still go for variance. Anyone could try to get a variance, but this puts a responsibility in the planning boards, um, part. And it would be strange to go through ZBA if the planning board is supposed to get the application.
I, yeah, I guess, what's the difference? One board versus the other?
The difference is that there's exact regulations of what the planning board should be approving. Um, instead of people coming to the ZBA with anything. We don't know what they're coming with. They could come with six, they come with four, who knows? And there's no regulation on what that should look like. This gives a what it should look like. Of course, yes, somebody might go for variance against what we have here.
Sure.
But it gives us more of an argument for if someone goes to ZBA for variance and they're completely off from what we're trying to achieve here. Hopefully there's less of an argument for them to have a hardship on why they should be getting, uh, relief from what we actually have in our bylaws. Right now it's not really from anything. So we don't have anything regulated. But this sort of just gives a, okay, what do they actually need to have? Uh, you know, twenty-five feet for industrial commercial driveways as a width. Someone comes with forty, someone comes with ten, we don't know. We don't have any sort of benchmark. This gives us the, what we want to see.
All right. I, yeah, I guess it still brings me back to the question. We're picking a board to oversee it, one versus the other. Could the same thing be accomplished with the zoning as opposed to the planning boards?
That was one of the problems with the ZBA was having deployed these, they didn't have the construction that we have as far as the utilities and stuff like that. We used to plan this stuff up. DVA wasn't, ZVA was just used to have carrying hardships to the grid based on hardships.
Yeah, they based on hardship, planning board basis in, in a variance. Uh, and planning board decisions are really based on the regulations themselves.
Interesting.
Yeah. Technically, the ZBA could do a special permit. We could give to the ZBA to do a special permit. Um. Personally, I think it's weird that ZBA has, um, a special permit of their own. There's a planning board special permit, there's a ZBA special permit. I like to keep special permits with the planning board for the most part, just because, like you said, we're used to this here. This is sort of a bread and butter. You have a planner and staff.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I guess the way I was, the way I was looking at it was, well, I don't know, there's specific whatever dimensional requirements and they either meet zoning or they don't. I guess that, yeah, to your point, anybody could ask for a variance, but.
But this at least says like what we're looking for instead of showing up with anything you want and no benchmark of what we're expecting.
They don't agree with us. They go on the zoning board for variance.
Yeah.
But then, you know, maybe there's a, a better case if, uh, someone were to appeal that as well with a second, hey, they should have gone to planning. Is that?
I agree. Any other comments, questions, Sean?
Yeah, what the Fran, what, what do you think about that?
Oh, what's that?
Just, yeah, just the conversation about the planning board versus the zoning board.
Well, I do agree with the comments that most special permits are heard through the planning board. And the zoning board is for, I'm not going to say more, um, serious, but more intrusive, I guess. Yeah, looking for variance.
Should be a special.
I think for the longest time, although we're talking about retreat lots, it was always done by variance in time. And you have a high standard to meet. And there's a lot of undeveloped land that might not enjoy the road frontage. Right? So by increasing those requirements, um, there's restrictions in here with the number of lots and the distance.
Yeah.
From new intersection. But if we're talking about retreat lots.
Yeah, I was talking about the driveways, but.
The common driveways. I think for a shared driveway for two house lots, um, that's not unusual.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a section here that allows for up to four by waiver of the planning board.
Yep, two.
Uh, meeting the criteria almost of a variance.
Yeah.
So it's a high standard to meet. And I think given the nature of, I think, topography or frontage or whatnot. I think that allowing a shared driveway for two is reasonable. Um, anything more than that looks like it's a higher standard based on, you know, particularly the hardship standard, which is difficult to meet.
It should be difficult.
Yes. So, and hardship is not financial hardship. If you don't grant this, I lose out on two lot type of hardship, but it's owing to the topography and, and, and all of that. So, uh, I mean, if we're talking about shared driveways, that's my, um, opinion about, um, you know, uh, special permits with the planning board versus variances with the zoning board. My recollection is that Menden has approved, um, retreat lots in the past through variance. But again, it's a much higher standard. And if they're going to approve many way, because they're meeting the, you know, two times the square footage or, you know, the minimum width and all those other requirements, then I think it makes sense to allow it by special permit. Uh, given the number that you might actually see and, you know, still having some pervert that, um, you know, what, what they're looking for. And sometimes they might be joined together, I think, right? A retreat lot and a shared driveway issue. Yeah, there are limitations, I think, on the proximity of the retreat lots, but, um, yeah, I think the nature of Menden's undeveloped land, it would lend itself to, you know, um, homeownership or housing unit creation, um, for otherwise unusable land if it doesn't have that frontage.
Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, there were, we had a, we received a grant for this. So we had consultants that we work for, for, uh, with CMRPC. Did they, um, did they produce any sort of, uh, like an impact study or a report on this? And what the impact would be potentially to the town and the taxpayers? You know, so do we have a feel for how many properties would be impacted by this?
When you say impacted, in what we got?
Well, we have retreat lots all over town, right? So is it ten properties? Is it a hundred properties? Is it, you know, I don't know how many. And, and I guess what I'm looking at is in the absence of, of any sort of a recommendation from a consultant or, uh, CMRPC, um, what would be the impact? So for every home that goes up, there's probably, let's just say, an average of two school age children in there. We get, costs twelve thousand five hundred dollars to put a kid through school in town. So twenty-five thousand dollars, we take in about eight to ten thousand dollars on average in tax for that, property tax for that house. So we automatically incur a deficit and I don't know what's the impact. What would be the impact to, you know, police staffing, fire staffing, you know, highway department, all that stuff. I think that's important stuff to know. Um, if we're going to seriously entertain something like that, don't.
I do think that's a good point. Um, I would venture to guess that the number that might act, may actually come forward with the criteria of a retreat lot, um, wouldn't be overwhelming, uh, but I think it's a legitimate point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we don't know.
Don't know.
We don't know. Um, has this ever come before the, the, the town before in terms of a vote? I, I, yeah, head nodding.
Yeah, it, uh, you know, I'm gonna be in front of this chairman, uh, or what I can't remember because we need it to be my age, you know? But, uh, it was somewhere between nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand and two that that was brought in front of town meeting and town meeting rejected the concept of, of retreat lots. And, uh, uh, retreat lots, flag lots, pork chop lots, and, and I believe shared driveways was, was part of that. And, and I do know that, that has been, uh, approved after that. To a lot of people's should written. Uh, and, and, and that's, that's important to know. And, and I also think that you, you're hitting on some really good terms. And that is the fair and equitable aspect of everybody being treated the same. And, and that is very noble to, to aspire towards. But there, there, there does come some, sometimes when we have to look at, really look at what's being done, what was done, what got you to this point? And I'm not talking to you folks as the board, I'm talking about the applicants. For example, um, I've heard of this lot in town that was subdivided and a, a house was built on it. And then now there's going to be, there, there's a smaller lot, a, a non-conforming lot. I'm told it's non-conforming that the person's going to want to build a house. Now, it, I'm bewildered to know how you can subdivide a piece of land from a, uh, a proper size to something where you're now making something that's, that's not proper. And I'm, I'm slipping on the word, what's non-conforming? You know, how do you do that? I always remembered in, in years past that you, you cannot make a non-conforming lot. And if you do own the parcel next to it, you're required by law to make that parcel over here that you made conforming. So you either put it back together and sell it as one, or you, I don't know if you can split it in half or, or whatever you do. But if you did that and you have, now have a parcel that's non-conforming, but I want to waiver for some reason. I want to waiver for maybe to put a, a driveway in or two driveways, one going to either side of the, the line. And, and it's like, wait a minute, where is the hardship? As, as I believe he said, sir, that, that just because it's, you, you're trying to get two houses out of it and all of a sudden you can't. Well, with all due respect, that's not my problem. You caused your own problem by building it. The law is quite specific. You cannot, uh, uh, create a hardship and then expect to get relief from that hardship.
Right.
So, both.
And so you're talking about a situation where you have a lot potentially that exceeds the minimum frontage. But if you carved out two hundred feet, let's say.
Yeah.
And you were left with another fifty or sixty feet, you could theoretically get two lots out of that. One with an A and R lot and the other with a retreat lot. And I'm not brushed up on it, but I think that violates or invokes concept of what's called infectious.
Um, in, in, in other words of taking.
Well, infectious invalidity, where you've created a non-conforming lot and it may not comply then with the requirement. So you've circumvented that by creating an R lot, you've created a non-conforming lot, but that would qualify for a retreat lot under the bylaws. And I thought, is that accurate? Again, I've created a lot with two hundred feet, but I have sixty feet left over and I got plenty of backland to.
No, that's not, that's not my understanding of this particular one. I got the bat in my mind, but what, you know, that, that's. So, so you've got two things, two very hot button issues going on in the, in this one article here. One is the retreat lot and then the other is the common driveway. If you, if you start going through all these mechanical aspects to take something that you normally would not be able to put more than one or two houses on, why do you want to shove four houses in there, you know? Why do you want to do that? I, I don't know. But, but the, the other comment was, uh, very clearly, you're correct, sir, on, on the fact of, of how many kids per house? It used to be two and a half. I don't, it, it could be down to two now. But it, it is costing, uh, twelve to thirteen grand, uh, to, to, uh, educate, uh, uh, a child in, in our school district. And what do we get? Eighty-five hundred, ten thousand dollars? So it's a net loss when, when you start going through and doing that.
Um, I just wanted to put this out there. I don't know. Um, there's a lot of talk about the fact that these are being approved. Even though we don't have any regulations, they're being approved through variance by ZBA, not planning board. Um, the zoning board of appeals is appointed by the select board. And, um, I think it's important that if there are issues with how the ZBA is, um, approving variances, then I, I think people should talk to the select board about those appointments in the future.
This is putting some regulations to that. This bylaws, this bylaws, this bylaws putting regulations for what's already being approved, allowing regulations.
It's happening.
This is giving some guidelines and some rules on what should be. We don't have that right now. So that's something you need to consider when you think of, if you go forward with this. And again, something we can change at any time. If you want to just pass it over, all of your field.
I had a couple of questions on this section. Under as restrictions, general restrictions, I guess one and two kind of together.
Are we looking? For retreat lots?
Retreat lots, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, the six oh five. E. No, sorry, F. One, uh, I, one, two. So more than two retreat lots can have, uh, show out contiguous frontage or shall be adjacent. Or shall be adjacent to each other and may only be adjacent along the access strip. I guess I'm trying, like. I'm not doing a good job of visualizing this spatially, but I'm. Could it be the case that we have two parcels that are owned by two separate people? Or maybe, I don't even know what it looks like, maybe more than two. I guess my question becomes like, it seems like there might be a race condition here, like if somebody asks to create a retreat lot first. That has implications for another owner.
Yes.
That concerns me. Um, that has real and significant implications to to. Somebody else that doesn't, you know, that that isn't taking this action.
It's similar to having a certain number of licenses for certain businesses in town.
Right.
Um. Whoever gets there first, yes, I agree. Um, and there's also, the third item there is is a minimum of one thousand feet of frontage between retreat lots. Um, each, any pair or for two lots, if there are two next to each other.
Less than adjacent.
Yeah, the two, you can have two, and then you have to have a thousand feet, and then you can have another two of them, or one, or two.
Right.
Um. Everyone in between.
Well, it's not the frontage, it's a distance element from the closest point on the frontage to this third thousand feet of frontage.
Yes, so multiple houses in between.
Yeah, um, by essentially people.
Yeah, this is like regular, regular lots in between, yeah.
Dylan, how much uh conversation did the bylaw review committee last there with? Uh, maybe distinguishing under common ownership, like um someone owned a bunch of land, they couldn't skirt it by. Creating these retreat lot after retreat lot, and and so we knew there was limitation or at least some sort of control over the distances. Eric brings up a good point and and, you know, YouTube too with respect to the licenses, but from a landowner's position. Uh, they've not just. And maybe it's timing, and maybe timing is everything, but um one person getting approved may effectively prohibit the next person. Was there any conversation about requiring that if it were under common ownership, not restricting some other landowner? Um, from using their property that could be in importance with bylaws, what for that one restriction?
I think this is sort of. You end up in a place where you lose something and you win something else. So if we don't restrict based on distance between and how many can be next to each other. Then you open it up to every property owner, and that gives everyone an equal opportunity to do this. But then you lose the fact that you're not gonna have, you know, you could have a house in front, a house in back, a house in front, a house in back, a house in front, a house in back. Throughout the whole street, and that's what I think we're trying to avoid.
Sure.
Is we don't want that, uh, this, I think, is being proposed. To give uh regulations and a small amount of options for this to happen, but with. Restrictions on. How how much we're gonna see in town.
Well, I think, so you're getting at the emotional thing, I don't know where it came from, but. You have a a property that may have been purchased on this, you know. As I think for every landowner that you help, you're probably going to harm a couple, you know, a multiple number of owners. You know, I bought this house, it was owned a certain way, you know, couldn't do this, and now all of a sudden you change it, I'm gonna have a a house in my backyard, my side yard, wherever. And that's a little messy. To say the least.
Cause and effect.
Yep, and then you might have other folks that sold the property because they could develop it. Now they did, and they, you know, the timing is everything.
I think it's probably where those limitations were born from. And then attempt to, you know, allow for it with some reasonable oversight, but also limited. Uh, based on, you know, spatial requirements or, you know, so for those reasons, I think it was more acceptable. Uh, from bylaws stand.
So I guess what I'm scratching my head at too a little bit is if. The number four was used, right? If it was more than two, if it went off to four. Wouldn't the the subdivision control a lot, uh, control a lot of that, and if it was two or less. Don't we have that accomplishing the ADUs, like anybody could just pop up, they have the the acreage, they could just put up an ADU. So what do we get from this, I guess is the question.
I forget, ADUs are by rights.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
May I? Uh, the ADUs are not subdivided. As of current. So, so the difference would be that you'd still have one owner owning owning the two, the two units, two houses. At versus if you were, if they were subdivided or you were allowed two single families. That's the difference.
They have to, they have to remain in common on that property.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And and two, that the uh square footage requirements for retreat lots are more expansive than the that zoning for that district. So that also limits the possibility, right? So is it two times?
Two times, I think, yeah.
Yeah, um. So I think there are some building controls, but. That's about the balance between, you know, allowing it with some reasonable restrictions versus kind of the law less than. You know, in front of zoning, we'll forget it. I think too that uh. Recently, the, I don't know, last decade or two, there's been such a push to increase the housing units, and yet from a town's perspective, that. Maybe string on um, you know, the budget for not taking in this much, but I think ADU was born from. The need for more housing.
And I'll mention that was the state, and this is us trying to, you know. And I say, just from my own professional development, I say us, this is a zoning bylaw review committee, which I assisted as staff. Um, this is not something that like. I have any stake in. Up to you guys, I'm very, right?
I have another question, like, uh, the bylaw refers to the access strip, and there's some requirements on what the access strip is, and it looks as though. That is fifty feet of frontage, but is there anything on depth of that?
Um, yeah, I think there is, hold on.
I was trying to see if that was a phase. I guess part of. Oh, okay, alright, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot here.
You gotta turn around for emergency vehicles. Limited to a public way as well, so one five, it was you.
Yeah, not off of a private way, but it, obviously the common driveway is not public, that's, that would be private. Indeed restricted, they they have to agree to it on their deed.
Since we're quieting down a little bit here, I'll note that Jane's had her hand up for life happening, Mark.
Uh, well, we did see you on video, all we see is your ceiling.
I know, that's all I want you to see, actually, that's all I want you to see. I, I am, I have. Millville Street has had this uh experience because there is, forty-two Millville is uh. A restricted area, I guess that's what you called it, I called it not enough frontage. And um there is someone who is building in the back, um, it's all wetlands back there. And um actually, there's a cellar that this spring was filled with water, so it looked like a swimming pool. And apparently that is not a problem for Concom, but at any rate, there is an environmental impact on this. And also, I think that um expanding the lot size will um. Uh, increase the environmental impact, actually. If the houses were close together, closer together, that would be better, and I think it really has to be regulated, and I do have a question. If indeed um this passes, can the ZBA, can someone go to the ZBA and get a variance, even though? Um, there are all these regulations, and the other thing too is a lot of people buy these lands. Knowing what the bylaws are, and then they go to the ZBA or whatever and have it changed, so. Um, I don't know, could a Z, could they go to the ZBA and have um. Get a variance, even though the planning board should be in charge of this?
So right now, um, right now, they're going to ZBA anyway.
Right.
We have no regulations, so yes, technically, they can still go to ZBA and try to get a variance. The goal here, yeah, the goal here is to have standards, have benchmarks, so that if they try to go to ZBA. There's more fodder for appealing that or it not making sense for somebody to go to ZBA and not planning board. It makes sense for them to come to planning board, if somebody tries to skirt that and go to ZBA and they do not have any. Any rational hardship. There's.
Right.
Very complex here, instead of it being this free for all of who knows what Menden wants to see. Trying to put some regulations in, so it's. That we have some way to regulate this, no, it's not gonna catch everyone, but hopefully, if the ZBA notices that. A lot of these might not be legitimate hardships, to have something to say, this is what it should look like. Right now, we have nothing to say what it should look like if someone's gonna go to either planning or ZBA or anyone.
Well, I do agree with that, but as I said, what what's going on, um, there's an acre and a half of trees that were cut down back there. Um, I I heard without permitting, although I did not look that up. But um it would be nice to have something like this regulated specifically so that things like this cannot happen. And that's it, I'm done.
Anybody else?
I guess I I'll throw a couple more things out there, uh, just in comparing this to some of the other uh towns and what they have out there. Uh, I think there's very few limits that are reflected in in what's written in this bylaw or proposed bylaw. Um, so for one, contiguous frontage is allowed uh versus other towns where retreat lots shall not be combined. Um, there's also reduced frontage to fifty, where other towns either maintain the zoning of the district or they have a much larger. Um, things like. Um, sixty-five foot circle can't be within ten feet of an abutting property line to protect some of the abutters. Uh, and that's also for emergency vehicle access and things like that. Um, the term adequate is used to describe access by driveway and turnaround area, I don't know that that's specific enough. Dimensional driveway requirements, there aren't, planning board would seek recommendations, there's no standards there. Um. Area of the retreat lot, two X the zoning district. Um. Yeah, and I already covered the other questions that I had, but.
That's a great, can respond a little bit of that?
Alright.
Um. I am, as your planner, more than happy to get some regulations on on record. I'm also more than happy to bring this back in the spring with some more work being done to it at the same time.
Like I said, Jim, if you're not comfortable, then we can pass over.
Yeah, I.
I'm more than happy both, but.
Something I think this really is picking up and important enough to, that if we're gonna do it, we get it, we can nail it, that's fine.
I do think those two topics garnered a lot of discussion at the review committee. Um, and also trying to put into context, right, thinking in different scenarios. How might someone trying to get around this, how can it be restricted? Um, I I think the concept is uh welcomed. To have a special permit in the, under the planning board that it would allow for it. Um, and but I don't disagree that um. If it's not. As thorough, maybe, or maybe just to kind of go back and 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 revisit that, I wouldn't object to that either.
Yeah, I think for, just one one thing, um, and you know, this project started, I don't know, what, a year ago? October or something around that timeline, and, you know, we're just hearing about it now, and it's a lot to digest in a very short amount of time, and I think. On top of that, there's some issues with the website and the public hearing notice being buried, it's a layers of people maybe not, you know, well, there's a many couple of people on here. Um, again, I think time is on our side, and let's get it. Just my opinion.
So as I said, if you're not comfortable, then we can move to pass over, bring it back at a future date. At that point, you may want to investigate, and you brought up how many lots would be affected in town, somebody couldn't investigate that. Yeah, and when we move forward and we put these on the books for now, and we tweak them as we go along. As we bend over the others, it's your choice.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
Hi, um, Kathy Hapingson, twenty-five Washington Street. Um, I just heard about this bylaw. And I'm very nervous about it, if it does pass the way it is now. So I'll, I'll hope when you look at this, you'll think of this um. Situation, so I have, um, I went to the assessors today. And I found out that uh adjacent to my house is fifteen acres. Of backlot. That could be potentially be developed. So the reason why I'm living there, and I've lived in this town for um forty-nine years. Is because I chose to this rural community, I like, I enjoy my field, and I enjoy the quietness, although, I mean. Do Washington Street people fly, but, I mean. And my neighbors, we have nice neighbors, but they're not right on top of me. Um, this bylaw, I could potentially have three or four or five homes along the side of me and maybe some on the back of me. So the reasons for my choosing to live in Menden. Would be totally changed, would would really upset my life.
Well, that's the point that Jason was bringing up, how it's gonna affect.
So, I mean, that's just one, my scenario of what could happen. You know, privately, we bought the pro, you know, we, we're, we're living in that property, we hope to be able to pass it on as a legacy to my grandchildren. You know, who also live in town, and because there are, there isn't a lot of open land left where you could maybe, you know, put a boner, maybe have a horse. So I just hope you consider that, that's why people live in the town of Menden. Because of that, they're not living here because they have a home and now all of a sudden, somebody can build a home behind them or a side of them. That's not why we chose to live in Menden. So.
Want me to take it?
Um, and the other thing is, I hope, you know, also as a taxpayer. Um, that not, not, not any impact of what to the town. As far as the services go, like especially our schools, the highways. Um, the emergency vehicles, how that's gonna pack and pack, because, you know, I'm sure there is a lot of, you know, just fifteen acres near me, I can only imagine. How much other land is, you know, in the back of somebody's house, so. I I think that this is really a big deal.
Well, it's definitely a big.
And I think it needs a lot, a lot more work.
Right.
Just a comment to you, if you want to reach out to me about that property next, next to you, um, I'll let you know, it'd be very difficult for them to do something. Absolutely, reach out to me and talk to me about it to see if you feel comfortable. Feel a little bit, yeah, I don't think it's as easy as as it might look right now, because there is a house on that property already. It'll be tough, so please reach out to me and we can look at it together. Yeah.
That was the thing, I I, you know, I downloaded this and I read it. And it says, um, this bylaw does not allow for the creation of more than one retreat lot from a single parcel. I was like, okay, and then in the next page, or. Then it's talking about under restrictions, under um. F. The section F under restrictions, then it's talking about no more than two retreat lots shall have contiguous frontage. So some way contiguous could be on the side, could be touching into that, the side.
Okay, front.
On the front, no more than two, two lots shall be adjacent to each other. But now it's saying one lot, and now all of a sudden we're talking about two lots, and now we're mentioning four lots, I'm like, how many lots do we have?
Well, and then those are important, as far as the contiguous frontage, that's what, fronts are on the public way. Right, so if you have a hundred. Right? So if you have 100 feet, and at the minimum width of the driveway, 50 feet, you don't get two lots back there. The, if you wanted to increase it to three or four, that would be subject to a waiver with same criteria that the zoning board. You know, so there are some limitations, restrictions and protections in there. I understand your point. It's, it's probably a case by case analysis. Dylan points out in, in your case in particular. But you did bring up good points, and, and I think that's part of what the intent was to maybe allow for with guidance, but not let it spiral out of control. It was mentioned tonight that people are going in front of zoning and their retreat lots to a variance. So it is still possible whether this bylaw passed or not. It's a different process, maybe a little messier. And we have less oversight over that.
So we can kind of balance.
And then to, to some meetings, and I have seen the subjectivity that can occur. And so I understand exactly what you're trying to prevent. And I, I don't know if that would come with more training for people that, you know, these, you're volunteering your time. And I appreciate every minute that it takes to sit down and read all this because you're doing this in tradition, whatever is going on in your lives. And, um, but a lot of times, people have friends and they want to see them get what they want. And so things get passed, which happens. And this is trying to prevent that. But at the same time, I don't know, it, it just seems like this involves a lot.
It, I think there was a lot, a real lot that went into it. And without that guidance, I think it's only more opens themselves up to potential liability. They're proving, you know, stuff that they shouldn't or.
They don't have staff either. They don't have any staff. So there's, there's no person who works for the town assisting.
Go ahead and have a quick second.
Um, I just wanted to point out the item about not more than one retreat lot from a single parcel, and then talking about two. So we were talking about that a little bit, about common ownership. So if somebody, this is one that I really thought about because to me, I see a major loophole in this. I don't know how to close it. This was at least an attempt to start regulating, but I think it could be tightened as well. If you have one parcel, you can't make two retreat lots. You can have one owner over here and they make a retreat lot. And then you have your neighbor and they make a retreat lot, and you get two. You can't have, you know, then we have a thousand feet of space. So the one retreat lot is trying to keep one owner from making two lots side by side. Yes, you can have two side by side, but those are separate owners.
And that's a tough down, is following property of one parcel versus a.
Develop it to.
Trying to, taking advantage of. So those are all good board.
Trying to.
They lead us to, um, if you look at it a little bit closer.
Happy.
And I, this was like the common driveway. So I'm just thinking, if they use that common driveway and it's near somebody's land, house lot. And they've done the driveway, but what happens? It might change the drainage or whatever, and they start getting drainage on their property. That, that homeowner, what, who would be responsible for thinking here of that problem that's been created? You know, who would say ownership of.
First of all, you can't, you can't send your water to your neighbor.
Well.
Anytime.
No, that's.
Yeah. You can't concentrate it unreasonably to spill over into the property. But water is the common enemy. And if you develop your property reasonably, and as a result, that water spills over, well, it's that property that is unfortunately their problem.
It's a mess.
You can't concentrate your water on your property to a pipe and then just have it pump out onto your neighbors. But if you build a house and it happens all the time, people build something and if they change the land, you know, as allowed, it may just naturally find its way to the neighbor's property. So that's why we refer to water, it's the common enemy. And you just have to try to make it go somewhere.
Can we restrict discussion back to the?
Yeah, I want to point that out. If that's okay.
Yeah, I also.
There's more discretion in the planning board than the ZBA when it comes to water, stormwater. The planning board looks at that much time. So the planning board's looking at that. Stormwater is already on your minds. It's on my mind. The ZBA doesn't look at stormwater.
I just have one more comment.
Go ahead.
Um, on, it was the third E of food process. You have an I, and then you have a double I. I guess I questioned, it says a special permit may contain reasonable conditions, safeguards, or mandate limitations on use and may require performance guarantees as well as construction inspection requirements. I think I don't understand why there's a A there.
This is typical language for special permits. The restrictions are already general restrictions that, yes, we could propose as conditions, but they're already the rules. This is saying that the planning board may exercise like additional conditions or safeguards depending on the specific situation. So each one is looked at as its, its own entity. And that specific application may have, you know, a certain way the land is or where their neighbor's house is, or where the wetlands are, the trees, whatever it is. So the special permit may contain other things besides the restrictions we're already talking about here.
So this includes the normal inspections that are required of a house that would be built on a regular lock.
Yeah, so that would be a building permit still.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jane, you have your hand up again?
Oh, I don't. I just didn't take it down. I'm not that techie, you know?
All right.
There, it's gone, it's gone.
Do you have some rebuttal?
I didn't, no.
All right, I'll make a motion. I'll, motion to pass over Article 13 from the Town Meeting Tag, New Sun File, six of the, six of five, retreat lots as proposed.
Have a second.
Second.
Hold on a favor.
Fudge, I.
Cross, I.
Frank, uh, Nero, I.
I don't want to write. I'll work on it.
And anyone who has.
You did a great job.
Please reach out.
Seriously, you did a great job bringing this forward.
I didn't.
Go from here.
President.
Nope, we'll go from here.
I'm very tired of.
All right.
I have one more.
Article 14.
Okay, this one is annotations and numbered styles. This one is not the zoning bylaw review committee. This is your planner, Dylan, to himself. Currently, the zoning files are covered citations that explain when a particular section is voted on, approved by a attorney general, when the bylaw indicated fact of, it's basically like in line with the rest of the facts, but you're reading a paragraph and at the end just starts some dates included in the paragraph. Moving the citations into the footer as footnotes is going to clean up the look of the document, keep our citations organized. Follow, you know, exactly what section we're talking about when we're saying this was amended this day. Instead of this, we're wondering what paragraph we're talking about. I'm also asking to standardize the type of numbering used throughout the document. If you have a little A and then I, 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 and a bit one, two, three. And yes, there will still be a few inconsistencies because the sheer number changes I'm proposing here. But I'm hoping to make a great number of corrections now. And if there are anything, anything else, I will also be bringing in spring when there is a typo in the bylaw, which I will bring in spring. This doesn't include any grammatical, textual, or context additions. I was at numbering, annotations in footnotes, and any text that says this section was deleted by Town Meeting O C footnote, which I've added in two places. But in your packet, I've included a list of every single change I'm proposing. I wrote it out. I also, I didn't include it in your packet because it's the entire bylaw of all the red line changes is available online and can be requested of me. Can you resonate with ourselves and see that? But this list of items is like, you know, for accessory infrastructure, the definition of that moved, voted 2024, 2014, AD approved 5.1, 2014, infected 2, 24, 14 to footnotes. Change 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 to I, 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 et cetera. Hold on.
Any questions, comments? What do you speak or watch?
You guys don't feel contentious about this one, really?
Oh, I will.
How do you like the letters versus numbers?
I hope it's pretty simple.
It is. Thank you.
I'm moving to recommend Article 14, Town Meeting to amend the annotations and report listing lists, the menting zoning bylaws as proposed.
Have a second.
I.
Oh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Fudge, I.
Cross. Nero, I.
I don't want to write. And that concludes our zoning bylaws reviews. Right, at this time, need to move to the minutes. Of.
Wait, do we need to close the public hearing for?
Okay. Yep, you're right. I'll take a motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The eight proposed zoning bylaw articles for Town Meeting.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Fudge, I.
Cross.
Nero, I. I don't want to write. As I was saying earlier, we need to consider the minutes first, September 15th, 2025. If you have a chance to reunite, I'll entertain a motion.
I mean, I'll vote a motion to accept the minutes, although I wasn't at the last meeting, but we, um, motion to accept the minutes of the September 15th, 2025 planning board meeting.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Fudge, I.
Cross, I. Nero, I.
I don't want to write. This time, I'd like to welcome my new member, Frank Nero, to the board.
Thank you, Barry, and just want to thank everyone for the recommendation. We had some good candidates. I think you guys deal and we deal, will deal with some important issues. And of course, it goes without saying, you know, much respect to Billy and Brizino and his efforts. And, you know, I don't think any of us are going to fill his shoes, but I think collectively, you know, he definitely set the tone to, you know, conducting business in this town. And, you know, hopefully, that continues.
I think your expertise and the way you responded tonight was very helpful.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate you bringing that.
I'll be back if necessary, but I'm fine with that.
I appreciate that. That was very helpful.
Do you want to hold up a board reorganization until you have all five members?
Yes, definitely.
So we'll make sure it's on the next agenda.
So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to, we need to pass over board reorganization.
Pass over, say it, pass it over.
I didn't know that was on the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to pass over.
All right, I had motion, we pass over the board reorganization as a topic until we have all five board members present.
Second.
All those in favor?
Fudge, I.
Cross, I. Nero, I.
I want to contain a motion or a adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Fudge, I.
Nero, I.
I don't want to write.